Good evening. Good evening. Today is August 8, 2024, and the time is now 6:30 PM. And I will call the regular meeting of the ISD 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to those of you in the audience and watching us at home online. Director Werbe, will you please lead us in?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Connor.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. So tonight, we're going to start with a report about our district assessment plan from Dr. Brandon Lowe, the district's assessment data and research coordinator. Welcome, Dr. Lowe.
Thank you. I appreciate the time to sit and talk about it. You have the comprehensive assessment plan, I believe that it was given to you already. I want to draw your attention to a couple of changes that we are having this next school year, that's a part of the plan. We wanted to bring it to your attention. So the major shift is the addition of a test called SABERS. It is the social, academic, emotional, behavioral risk screener. And the point of SABERS is to allow us to have data on our students' social, emotional well-being. As part of the MTSS process, the committee work found that that was a gap in our assessment system. That is, that's data that we really need to have in more thorough, you know, detailed ways. So we already own the rights to that system because of our, because of our contract with FastBridge. And so it's, we have already been, you know, paying for and having access to that system. So we felt like, in work with, you know, other departments in the district, that that's the screener that we should stick with. So that's the main thing. A couple of other, you know, more minor changes that I'll draw your attention to. Pre-ACT has historically been administered in early spring. The recommendation is to move it into early fall to give teachers, principals, time to really interact with those data points with the students that they have with them at that time. You know, practice, and this is just traditional practice, you know, all over the place is to administer pre-ACT as really a precursor to ACT. Same thing with PSAT and SAT, but to administer as kind of a preview test so that students can go on and practice and prepare, you know, and gain skills to do, you know, to perform well when they take the, you know, college preparation exam. But if teachers can also have access to those data points, they will be able to work with their students and provide that support. So the idea again with it is that by us using it early, administering it earlier in the school year, teachers will have access to that data with students that are with them in the room, and they'll be able to, you know, support in whichever ways the students need. And then the final thing is that, as we did this past year, where we offered SAT and PSAT, NMSQT, to our students as an optional assessment, we will continue to do that, but those efforts will be guided by the district. All right. Are there any questions? Know that it's a, you know, pretty lengthy document that just takes time to really process through.
Any comments or questions from board members? Go ahead.
I just have a comment, more than a question, but I appreciated, towards the end of the report, the grade-by-grade summary of these are all the tests and how long they take, because I think, you know, reading through it, it was like, when do they have time to actually go to class? And then you see a lot of the tests are 10 minutes once a year, 15 minutes. So it helped me kind of grasp that, yes, it sounds like a lot, and it is a lot, but also they're not taking six weeks out of the year doing testing. So thank you for that summary especially.
Yeah, thank you for that comment. I appreciate that. That's really important to, you know, to us and to me, to make sure that we are not overwhelming the school day with testing. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Additional questions or comments? Director Lowe?
Thank you, Chair Miller. Yes, thank you for this report. Really appreciate it, Dr. Lowe. Now, this is the first time that this report has come to us, correct?
So I believe that you got the report last year as well. I know that it is, you know, that it's written into policy, but I think that we've just maybe done it more informally in the past.
Got it.
But I think that you, I think that it came last summer at about the same time.
Okay. We see an awful lot of reports, so I wasn't sure. So thank you.
Yes.
And I guess two questions, just on, you know, the first question is more philosophical, on, you know, elaborating on your experience, your professional expectations, on how staff and administrators can maintain that balance of high expectations, rigor, and equity all at the same time.
I love that question. I think that, you know, when I first moved to Minnesota and started all of the assessment trainings here to, you know, because different states have different systems, and I'm coming from another state. And in almost every session with MDE regarding testing, they talk about assessment as a balanced approach to testing. To balance the things that you talk about, I think that, you know, the great thing about testing here in Minnesota is that we really strive to find that balance from the very top, you know, at the state, all the way. It's a conversation that I have with school assessment coordinators all the time. You know, I'll get questions about, you know, just really technical aspects of, you know, should we do this or should we do that? Because a lot of times, I mean, we all just want to do things the right way, right? And so, you know, people will get really, you know, stuck on technical details. And then when, when they come to me, if, you know, if it's ever, you know, if it's ever a question, my answer to them is always, you know, what's best for the student in this situation? What's best for the student? Because all our students are unique. And so, you know, when we have a standardized approach to anything, you know, in education, you know, we as educators also have to understand that we are working with individual students who come with individual needs, who come with individual personalities. And so, you know, I guess the answer is, it's a, it's a very high priority of mine to try to bring this, to bring assessment as a balanced approach between, you know, equity, between us gathering accurate and appropriate and standard data, and also to, you know, making sure that we have test security, that the same measure that a student has over here is, you know, the same as over here. So, yeah, I mean, and do we always get that balance right? You know, I don't, I don't think we do in education, but we really try hard to do that.
Humans working with humans. It's kind of the nature of the game. And then, thank you for that. I appreciate that. And then the last question is, and I think I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it, in terms of, you had mentioned that certain tests are going to be managed at the district level. Is that, again, making sure that we're ensuring equitable access and communication, both to families and staff? Is that something that the district is going to be managing?
Communication typically is going to come from school because the logistics are typically decided at the school. Usually, communication will come in that way. In no other circumstance does really the district communicate about specific logistics for the test. So communication will still, you know, be from the school. But when we talk about, you know, the district more, you know, managing it in a more thorough way, we're really looking to make sure that every student, year after year, has the same opportunities as the students who come before and the students who will come after. That's really what we're, the reason behind it.
Got it. Yeah, and I think, I mean, for me, I think communication is an important part of that, right? Making sure we're consistent and getting the message out in time to, so that folks can be, you know, the student can be present and folks can be prepared on both sides of the, of the equation.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I was just wondering.
Yes.
Just a quick question. So it's not in individual languages than it is just in English? In the school, would just prepare that child for, with their own communication language?
Depends on the test. There are a couple of our screeners that are offered in Spanish. Now, that said, you know, of course, we are bound by law to administer many of our tests in English. However, there are tests that are available in other languages, and it really just depends on the test. I mean, when it comes to ACT or SAT or the likes, those are, those are in English.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Lowe.
All right, thank you.
Next, we are going to receive a report about the new version of the 2024-2025 calendar aligned to Policy 602 and the REED Act. Presenting this information will be Superintendent Dr. Teresa Battle, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Chris Belmont, and Principal Brad Robb. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Miller, and members of the board. Tonight, we will share a calendar that was initially approved by the board February 22, 2024, which only had 169 student instructional days. The last policy review committee agreed to revert back to the original policy, 602, that's currently on the website. June 20, the policy was on the consent agenda with no changes and passed unanimously. So the calendar we present tonight will be in alignment with district policy and also adhere to the act requirements. A reminder, a little background, you are aware that we were early adopters of science of reading, and that we initially started a pilot program with curriculum materials aligned to the science of reading. And so we set our professional development calendar based on making sure all of the teachers, as required by law, would have the training. For example, our preschool teachers, they finished their training in spring. And so there were many districts who were not early adopters, did not have professional development, long-range plans in place. The legislature heard from those districts, so they did, this past session, give some flexibility to have a longer timeline. But based on our teachers and recommendation from our literacy committee, we are sticking to our timeline. And so for that reason, we can give you more information about that, but we're asking for a revised calendar. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Chris Belmont and Principal Brad Robb to give some more information about the calendar committee. And if needed, we can give you more information about the literacy committee's recommendation to, here to our original professional development calendar.
Yeah, thank you, Superintendent Battle. Well stated. I think the board can see kind of, so after our policy review committee discussed at depth our, our policy and how, and specifically, the total number of instructional days, Mr. Robb and Ms. Drugey, and then Director Oftedal, and I worked to figure out how best we could meet the terms of the policy as well as best address the substantial needs that our teachers are going to be, the time needs that our teachers are going to need this year to fulfill the REED Act requirements. So you can see before you how we tried to really thread that, the needle, and provide 2.5-hour early release days. Two of them went on March 28 and May 2. May 2 was previously earmarked to be a remote learning day. So we converted that into an in-person, 2.5-hour in-person early release day. March 28 is the day leading into spring break. That's going to help us achieve four hours of the REED Act required learning through our vendor carryall. And then we'll be working with our site principals to try to find other time within that kind of March to mid-May timeframe to get at those other five-plus hours.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members? All right. Thank you then for your report tonight. Next, report from Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent.
Oh, thank you, Chair Miller and members of the board. Unbelievable, we are less than a month from the first day of school. So if any of our students are listening, it's probably a resounding, oh. But tonight, I wanted to share with you and our families reminders about a couple of things to do to get ready. First of all, the first day of school for most students is Tuesday, September 3. For kindergarten and first grade students, the first day will be September 5, because students in both grades will be taking part in some short assessments and family connection meetings to help teachers get to know them and prepare for the coming year. This is new for first grade in our district. Some students will start virtually, so that the youngest students at those schools can take part in some special welcoming activities that day. At Burnsville High School, Eagle Ridge, and Nicolet Middle Schools, students in grades six and nine will go to school in person, while students in grades seven, eight, and grades 10 through 12 will attend the first day virtually. Burnsville Alternative High School and our best students will all be in person. And of course, our 191 Virtual Academy students will be attending virtually. Before the first day of school takes place, all of our schools will host open houses later this month. Please, parents, watch for details. Go to our website for more information, and also look for information from your children's, your child or children's school. As a reminder, school meals are no cost for all students, including breakfast and lunch. Even though meals are provided at no cost, we really need families to continue to complete the alternate, alternate application for educational benefits, because this ensures that we will receive funding for eligible families for benefits such as waived fees for athletics, activities, and more. And it makes sure that our schools receive the funding that they need. Again, parents, you can look for your school for some information, but also on our website at isd191.org.
That concludes my report. Thank you. Thank you. Any comments or questions from board members? All right. Do board members have any reports they wish to share? And just a reminder that we have our committee reports scheduled for our next meeting on August 27. Any reports outside of committee reports? Yes.
Just a report on the really fun evening that I enjoyed this past Tuesday night to unite. Had a wonderful time riding with our SRO Jimenez, Officer Jimenez. And we were also joined by two other city workers, Chris and Will, and they were from the street and the utility department. And so we made our way to four different parties. And I just had the joy of bumping into a couple of our staff and meeting their families and just having really great conversations, both with the staff and their families and also just community members, hearing about, you know, their thoughts about our schools and talking about what a wonderful, beautiful evening it was. It was just, you couldn't ask for a better weather night. So just a really, really pleasant evening.
Fun. Go ahead.
And I attended the Juneteenth, Burnsville, in Burnsville. And it was scheduled to be at a park, and because of the rain and the cold weather and the wind, it was moved to the district office, which was a really good last-minute plan. And they put on a really good Juneteenth. So just my, my thanks, and thank you for your hard work, for anyone that was involved in putting that together, because it was a really good show. The mayor was there doing her line dancing and everything. It was, it was really, the food trucks were good. So just my comments to that district, our district putting on a good Juneteenth.
Excellent. Any other? All right. So now we will move to the business portion of our agenda, starting with the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do board, does any board member wish to remove any item from the consent agenda tonight? Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Merzil, seconded by Director Hume. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed say nay. The motion carries unanimously. First item under new business is we are being asked to approve the Dakota County Technical College income contract. Here to present the recommendation is Dr. Kathy Funston, Director of Strategic Partnerships and Pathways. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Miller, Directors of the Board, Dr. Battle. Tonight, I am bringing two income contracts for approval, one from Dakota County Technical College and the other from Inver Hills Community College. The contract with Dakota County Technical College initiates in college, which is another term for concurrent college credits in our high school. And this is for a new course that we're offering this year as a concurrent class, Child Growth and Development. We've offered this class in the past, but not for college credit. This will give students the opportunity to earn three transferable credits, and it also aligns with our education pathway, which also gives them yet another chance to earn early college credit as they advance in their careers to becoming future teachers. There are already 23 students enrolled in this course for 2425. The contract with Inver Hills Community College initiates PSEO by contract, and that is part of our Associate of Arts degree pathway. PSEO by contract occurs when we do not have staff with a postgraduate degree in the content or 18 postgraduate credits in that content area. In other words, a teacher cannot teach college algebra at Burnsville High School without a graduate degree in mathematics or algebra. So if many, many of our teachers have graduate degrees in education, but that will not count towards these particular courses. In 2024-25, we will contract with Inver Hills for Inver Hills Environmental Science and also for Introduction to Criminal Justice. There are 47 students enrolled in Environmental Studies, and so, science, excuse me, and this is part of that AA degree pathway. And we have 20 students who are enrolled in the criminal justice, and that would be a, an elective credit for students getting their AA degree, or for any other student in, at Burnsville High School who would like to pursue a degree in criminal justice or work with our police departments. And so with the criminal justice course, it's very interesting, because we did not, when we first initiated this, have enough students to run a full class. We partnered with Simley High School. And so that way, we do a cost share, and because this is an asynchronous class, our students are able to participate, their students are able to participate, and we share the cost of that particular course. So because I'm bringing these two contracts, Dakota County Technical College and Inver Hills Community College, I'd like to share just a little bit of data around these two partnerships and these two course offerings. This does not include all of our college and the schools' credits that students are earning or other post-secondary contracts that we may have. So we offer 16 Dakota County Technical and Inver Hills Community College courses at Burnsville High School, offering a total of 49 credits. Burnsville High School teachers teach 14 of these courses. 14 out of the 16 courses. That's amazing. 999 students are enrolled in these classes for next year. Now, that is not the unduplicated count. I don't have that. But if you just take the number of students actually taking these courses, 999 students. Upon successful completion of these courses, over 40, well, almost 49,000 college credits may be earned, representing $800,000 in tuition savings for our students, just next year alone. So with that information and our contracts, I am asking for the board's approval of these income contracts with Dakota County Technical College and Inver Hills Community College for the 2425 school year.
Is there a motion to approve the Inver Hills Community College income contract?
So moved.
Directed by Director Werbe and seconded by Director Alt. Is there any discussion on the matter? Well, I'll just say that's fantastic. I mean, I love big numbers like that, especially in favor or against. That's awesome.
Thank you.
Any other commentary? No? Okay. All those in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion therefore carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll now move to the next item on our agenda, and we're being asked to approve a joint powers agreement. Oops, I skipped. Yes, I, sorry. Up next. All right, let's, let's back reel here for just a second. Dr. Funston, we're going to need you back up. Sorry. All right. We're going to take a motion to approve the income contract, I turned the page, that's the problem, the income contract for Dakota County Technical College.
So, so moved? Am I too early?
No. Moved by Director Hume. Need a second. Seconded by Director Merzil. Is there any discussion on this matter? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay. Up next, Dr. Funston will be presenting one more income contract.
Those were the two.
Well, we did them in both.
I apologize. All right.
We're just getting back in the center.
Yes.
Exactly.
I thought I, okay. Now, we're going to move, yes, I apologize, you did not need to come back up. Now, we're going to move to the next item on our agenda. We are being asked to approve a joint powers agreement for childhood vaccinations between Dakota County and ISD 191. Here to present this recommendation is Amy Petrowski, Director of Students Support Services.
Good evening, Chair Miller, Dr. Battle, and members of the board. I am here this evening to bring forward to you for your consideration the joint powers agreement for the childhood vaccinations between Dakota County and the District 191. The purpose of the agreement is for Dakota County, through its contract with Homeland Health Specialists, to provide childhood vaccinations at our school district locations. The initiative aims to break down the barriers that prevent some of our families from accessing the necessary vaccinations, thereby ensuring that all students can access their education without any hindrance. By organizing the vaccination clinics at school sites, the district strives to support our families in getting their children immunized, promoting a healthier and more prepared student body. I recommend that the Board of Education approve the joint powers agreement between Dakota County and District 191 to provide childhood vaccinations in our school locations.
Is there a motion to approve the joint powers agreement for childhood vaccinations?
So moved.
Moved by Director Connor.
Second?
Seconded by Director Alt. Is there any discussion?
Just a comment, thank you, Amy. I really appreciate the fact that we're seeing more of these health-centric recommendations coming forward, that we're bringing that into our schools and making those types of services more accessible to our students and families. I think it's just, just another layer of making sure that we're doing the most that we can for our students and trying to make sure they, as you point out, can attend school with less of a risk of getting sick. So, thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Any other discussion?
Just one question.
Yes.
I didn't see it anywhere, I may have missed it. So it's no, at no cost to the families, correct? Or is, do they bill their insurance?
Insurance, yeah. There's some billing to the insurance.
Okay.
But that kind of just depends upon what the, where we go with the different. So all of them will go through the insurance. There might be some cost to the families, but at this time, we don't have any plan for that.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify that, that in the future, there might be, but we're not seeing that coming forward.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed would say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next on our item, next item is on our agenda is to consider approval of the Burnsville Girls Hockey Cooperative. Here to present the recommendation is Athletics Director Kevin Kleiner. Welcome Kevin.
Good evening Board Chair Miller, Superintendent Dr. Battle, and members of the board. Thank you for having me. Here to get the cooperative sponsorship approval for girls hockey with, with us in Eastview High School. You're probably aware, the last couple of years, we've had a pretty unique co-op that for a lot of different reasons, I can expound if you like, but has already formally been dissolved with all the different interests of those different schools going different directions. But that was not bad news in this case. This is really exciting news to have the opportunity to partner with Eastview. If you're not aware, we play youth hockey with them already. So this is a real natural fit, it's natural for relationships, for keeping our hockey-playing girls players in our, in our district and continue to play with the, you know, those friends and teammates that they've had growing up in youth hockey. So this is really exciting. It's been a journey to get to this point for this, for this sport. And we are very excited about it.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation related to the Burnsville Girls Hockey Cooperative?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Seconded by Director Werbe. Is there any discussion on the matter?
I just have a quick clarifying question. So this is just with Eastview High School, not also Apple Valley High School.
Correct. Yep, correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Well, knowing the amount of work that goes into this, I appreciate your time on this. Thank you. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed would say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now hear once more from our Director of Athletics, Kevin Kleiner, along with Bill Heim, Director of Activities, as they present a recommendation to approve the 2024-2025 Athletics and Activities Handbook. Welcome to you both.
Good evening again, Board Chair Miller, Dr. Battle, and members of the board. We, joined by Mr. Bill Heim, Activities Director and Assistant Principal at Burnsville High School. And we are here to get your approval of the 2024-2025 Activities and Athletics Handbook. Go ahead.
Yeah, just want to say thank you for just all the continued support. Feels like I was just up here a little bit ago, reading off all the accomplishments of all the things that our students and our advisors have been, been able to accumulate awards at state, national, world level. And I just want to say thank you for that. And we have just the best staff and the best kids at our school that excel in so many ways.
Is there a motion to approve the 2024-25 Athletics and Activities Handbook?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt, seconded by Director Connor. Is there any discussion or questions on the matter? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. Up next, we will now consider approval of the 2024-2025 Student Handbook. Presenting this recommendation will be Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent and Jesus Sandoval Principal. Welcome gentlemen.
Thanks Chair Miller, Superintendent Battle, members of the board. Mr. Heim referenced last year, a year ago, we spent the bulk of our summer processing significant changes, especially around Policy 506, but around all types of things that are represented in our handbook. This summer, more changes from the legislation, but less in volume. So we tried to be more proactive, tried to, had a goal, a long-term goal to, to bring you this handbook in the first meeting in August so that our site leaders can really get working on successful implementation for the fall. And then I was, Principal Sandoval coming, because we took some, some new steps to make sure that we were proactive and really collaborative this year.
Yeah, so this year, a variety of individuals, staff members, attended a workshop in April that consisted of elementary, middle school, and high school personnel. And then after, after that workshop, that was focused on student handbooks. So many districts across the state representation. Through that, we met throughout the remainder of the spring into the summer to really craft what you see in front of you with the edits and the additions and modifications. And so we certainly know that's a collaborative piece. It should never be in isolation. And we feel comfortable bringing this to, to your attention.
Some of the features, I think you, Principal Sandoval, some of the features include both like content and in structure, structural changes, a new welcome address from our, address from our superintendent, changes reflecting language or anticipated policy changes for cell phones, as well as some statute language that came out this last spring, updates to the safe and drug-free workplace, field trips, graduation requirements, as well as some new guidance for families and staff around artificial intelligence, remote learning days. And some of the, some of the key structural changes included updating our matrix to try to be more user-friendly, as well as alphabetizing some pieces. We weren't quite sure why they weren't alphabetized, now they are. Back to you Chair.
All right, is there a motion to approve the student handbook for the 24-25 school year?
So moved.
Moved by Director Werbe.
Second.
Seconded by Director Merzal. Is there any discussion on the matter?
Thank you Chair Miller. It's always an undertaking when you update a handbook. And appreciating that, you know, this is a collaborative process. That's, you know, that's really great. I just have a couple of questions, more on the policy side. Page two, looking at the disruption policy, 506. And maybe this was in the attachment. I think it's in the other document, not the handbook itself. The matrix, it might be the matrix, yeah. Just wondering if you could elaborate on why the escalation of disruption includes a Level 1 intervention? Where it's an escalation from one level already to the next?
Yeah, thank you. You pointed out something that we spent, so I'm just really grateful for our team. We had Sarah and Kelly there to help also describe and make sure that all of our discussions are moving forward as kind of a mini version of Policy Review Committee in some respects. So one thing we also had was Dr. Lowe was with us because he helps complete the DIRZ report to the state. So we do have a dynamic that's interesting. We have statute, and then we have our local policy, as well as our, what we report at the state level for our DIRZ. And sometimes those definitions don't always match up. So disruption would be one, where it's, it's interpreted locally in, in different ways, what makes a disruption. We landed on the, we landed on that definition of Level 1, that a student that, so they're just thinking about the difference between an accident, a mistake, or kind of a persistent or intentional violation of our values. Level 1 would be more in that accident slash mistake, where the classroom teacher would help reteach and remind the student of the, the expectation and, and sometimes maybe make a little note. And then when we get into Level 2, the teacher is seeking some advice because they're seeing the potential of a need for early intervention. And then when we get to Levels 3 and 4, our administrator is working with the teacher still, but they're, they're helping lead that intervention.
So really, and I'm just, just clarifying to make sure I understand, I think I get to, Dr. Belmont, that the first level is kind of its own definition. The second, the second level is that persistent, the separate and persistent type of disruption.
Right. And knowing that every behavior has kind of different manifestations and origins sometimes, as a general rule, the higher the level, the higher of either impact to somebody else and severity, or the, the higher the level, the, the more documentation that suggests the student's not responding to the intervention at the previous level.
And Principal Sandoval, I'm going to put you on the spot.
Please.
How would you, as a principal, communicate those two differences to your staff?
Yeah, and so, great question, thank you for asking. Really is, like, like we would take it, the, the attack or the direction of, how does academics field, right? So the first thing that we need to do is provide resources and tools for all of our teachers. And we call that Tier 1. And so after that Tier 1 approach from an academic lens, if something is not clicking with students, there's an interventions differentiation that happens, so too is that with, with the behavior. And so we want to empower our teachers to be able to really feel comfortable and confident that they have the resources and tools to be able to take care of some of the levels of behavior that may not cause a direct need to bring in office staff. And so that really is the first level, 1 and 2. Whereas after some interventions are taken place, or if a behavior escalates to the level where there's needing immediate assistance, then certainly in the office staff, the administration deans can step in and, and help support.
Awesome. Thank you both for clarifying that. I have a good picture in my mind now, thank you. The next question, staying in the matrix, page 2, dress code. If you could elaborate on why grooming was removed from the verbiage? Because I do still see it in Policy 504.
I know we had a lengthy discussion on that, I can't recall exactly.
And I guess my point is, if it's in policy?
So I, I need to go back to our notes to know exactly what that discussion was. I believe.
Yeah, I don't have that in front of me.
Yeah. I don't, I don't recall exactly if, if the discussion was to make sure that we brought that question up to the Policy Review Committee as to why it is to dive deeper into where that's, that statute and that MSBA was, or if it was just determined by the practitioners that it created a level of conflict for the, for the administrators that was unhelpful to, to meeting our goals. So I have, I'd have to get back to you on that.
So my suggestion, since it is in policy, I don't, I don't believe that you can put something in handbook that contradicts with, with policy. Being, being on the policy committee, if there's a recommendation to change the policy, put that horse first and then make the change in policy. And then the next time the handbook comes.
Yeah, and I don't think that conversation was to contradict existing policy, but I just don't remember.
No, and, and that's, and that's probably a stronger word than what I, what I had intended. But I would recommend that we make sure that grooming is still in, in policy, in the handbook, because it is in policy. And then, two final questions, sorry. District, page 14, District 191, beliefs about behavior in school. In the discussions about the beliefs, what kind of alignment was there to our core values?
Either one, okay.
Either one, yeah.
Certainly that, that was a part of our discussion.
For sure.
I do recall that. Our core values are in many discussions that I'm, that I'm a part of. And certainly that core values were a part of the process, looking at the handbook. And so within the belief system. So to answer your question, yes, that was a part of the, the conversation and the items that we, we have within the, the documentation, so.
And I guess my, my, my question is more, it's, you know, we're talking about what we believe with behavior. And I was surprised that more of the core values weren't self-evident in those beliefs because those are ultimately the, the district beliefs. So.
Thank you for that suggestion.
Yeah, no problem. And then lastly, just curious, Principal Sandoval, about the attendance contract that's mentioned in the matrix.
Yeah, and so in regards to how, as a school, be more specific within the high school, right? So attendance is certainly a, a concept that many people have been talking about for some time, long before myself. And any high school that you, comprehensive high school that you have a number of students, attendance is a topic. And so because of the, the manner of us having a, a more focused attention in the years to come around attendance, through different programs, through different interventions, that is one thing that we have done at high school. And we wanted to call that out, that a part of an intervention could be an attendance contract that allows the families, the student, the support staff to understand what is that specifically planned to help support that individual student. And so it, it varies from, anything from allowing a, almost a check-in to a particular staff member to, we have some students that their regular passing time is not as successful. And so they have a separate passing time that, that is supported with, with their families, with themselves, because there's such, there's such a distraction that can be when you have 2,000-plus students in the halls that wants. And so those are two examples of what an attendance plan could look like. But it certainly is, just like we have behavior plans, just like we have academic plans, we can't ignore. And so we wanted to call that out within the, the student handbook.
Awesome. And Dr. Belmont, just elevating it broader district-wide. Obviously, it would be a different attendance contract with families, depending on the age of the student, you know, elementary versus middle school versus high school.
Right. Yeah, I mean, our, our goal with student handbooks is always to, so it's a, it's a K-12 document, which is a little tricky at, at times. And there is some disclaimer about age in the beginning, but yeah. I think there's, maybe there are some common threads in both.
Similar actions, possibly, different conversations. Yeah. Thank you both.
Chair Miller. Chair Miller, members of the board, Director Alt. Just to add some more information to the response about your last two questions. So I'll work with the attendance contract question first. As you may recall, we received funding from this last legislative session to really become a part of a cohort with the lead district as Minneapolis Public Schools to increase our attendance. And so they have had their first meeting. Director Amy Pietrowski attended along with Morgan, who is the point person. And so the attendance contract is one of those strategies. So it may evolve from our discussions with the other districts. I wanted to make that note also. So thank you for those questions, that question. Your question about the alignment to our core values. So I believe the beliefs actually show how we live. show how we live those core values, so to mention a couple. Um, so first, cultural proficiency, if you look at the second belief, equitable and responsive actions that support the diverse cultures, also that we are inclusive, um, some of our, we've had a lot of summer learning and, um, a lot of productive work, but part of our learning, um, for our leaders in our leadership academy was learning about indigenous culture in students. And so when you look at discipline, um, for educators, it means to really teach, not to punish. What we learn from indigenous cultures, when that harm is caused, that that's when you need to pull the person in closer, not to exclude them. So when we have relationships, we'll be restored and repaired whenever harm has occurred, that is inclusiveness, and it also builds upon our cultural proficiency. So I think we may wanna, we may consider listing the core values, but I really think the beliefs show how we live it in our actions when we are administering, um, the student handbook, uh, the matrix of responses. So I do see it in that way, the how, not explicit about what the core value is.
And I like, and I like the beliefs, don't get me wrong, I, I, I do like them, I just, um, it was more of a curiosity and for next time thinking question.
So I think that's a really good question, because some people don't understand the why, or what's the foundation of the belief, and our core values are really the foundation. So I appreciate the question.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, so in looking at this, that behavioral level matrix, it looks like, um, disorderly was crossed out and changed to physical contact, and when I read through it, I just want to gain some clarification on it, because when, the way I'm reading it, it sounds like there's discipline involved for unintentional contact that may not cause harm. Is that what I'm re, gathering from that?
No, I mean, the, I guess it would, um, it would, it would depend on your interpretation of discipline.
Well, it says intentional or unintentional physical contact between a student and another individual that is not age appropriate and may or may not involve harm. So when I read that, is that, am I just not reading it correctly? That's what it sounds like to me.
I just think, so if it's, it, so a level one, um, so thank you for that question, because it is, it comes up a lot in how we, when we were working with our deans, our SSLSs, our associate principals and our principals in interpreting activities. So, so to share an example, um, of a level one instance would be, um, students dismissing from the, from the playground into the cafeteria door, and a student, you know, is excited to get to the line and, and runs over a, a student, not causing any big injuries or physical harm. The teacher may choose to, um, take, take that student and have a conversation about a better way to transition into that, that line. So that's why I should ask, like, it kind of depends too on people's version of discipline. In that, in that case, it, it might appear on our, um, matrix as something that the teacher wants to pay attention to in a level one space, but it wouldn't result in any type of office referral, or, um, the, the, the primary motive, uh, the primary intervention for level one is typically reteaching, so that's where.
Okay, so.
So no intention.
It's more about the discretion of who's disciplining and/or correcting the behavior, depending on the level of what the offense is.
Yeah, level one.
Or whatever, I mean, wouldn't necessarily be an offense, but whatever the action is, because it's, you know, when you see all the boxes checked, um, it's confusing, I guess, in some ways, because I'm like, okay, you're saying that there's, every single box, it, there's like, okay, there, you're saying that that behavior can have every level of...
Correct, yeah, it's really, that's a good noticing, it's something, so when we're working with our teaching staff to have the same conversations in a lot of respects, it's helping, um, process that some behaviors, we really have to dive in and, and look at just what you described, the intent, the impact of harm, and we're not going to rush to example for like a level three and a four, where we're going to fill out, um, an office referral and look at exclusion for a behavior that requires reteaching in order for the behavior to improve. There are some other, um, you'll notice that some go straight to three or four, because we feel like that those, um, those behaviors, regardless of circumstance, require some sort of documentation and support for the teacher, so.
Okay.
So thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah.
It looks like it's all, like, fluid, but that's why we're, we're, that, that's why we're trying to get a new matrix that's a little more clear, so I'm hopeful that when you see the revisions next year, you'll say, that matrix is easier to interpret.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, Director Hume.
So something Director Webb just said got me pondering a bit. Assuming this is, um, approved, um, what's the, kind of the next step as far as making sure that all the teachers and other staff are aware of the changes that are being made? Because some of them are quite substantial, as you, as you've referenced.
I can, yeah, I can share.
Especially this matrix, yeah.
Yeah, so certainly, um, starting with the administrative team, the support staff, so your deans, um, and then kind of when workshop week comes, right, finding some intentional time to, um, share with, with teachers, um, as they, um, are onboarded back, and so that, that would be part of the process to ensure that prior to students coming, uh, the adults in the space have a really, uh, comfortable and competent, um, understanding of the student handbook, um, as, as it relates to them, as it relates to the students, as it relates to the families that they also help and serve, so.
Sure, because while we can sit here and come up with hypotheticals in our questions, when it's the teachers that are living it, it'll be important that they understand kind of what the next steps are, and whether it's a level one or lever, level two.
Sure, and, and if I could, and this is more specific within the high school.
Sure.
But even our administrative team, um, has a certain time where we're, um, doing scenarios, um, with, with our staff, to be able to, um, identify not only the, the behaviors or, um, the issues, but also what are the resources that one has, uh, to, to work through that, and then what does that look like, um, if your interventions and your resources no longer, um, can help support that, that child, that student? So what does that look like in the next, uh, level, so?
Right.
If I just, uh, thank you for that, Director Hume, if I just might add from the K-12 perspective, our, so we haven't met all, we haven't reached the summit for implementation of the student handbook, but our goal is awareness, ongoing capacity building, and then we expect to see, like, to Director Webb's point, consistent and effective implementation. So we start with that awareness piece, especially August into September, we're also working, like Principal Sandoval said, with our administrators to really understand both the, what's in this handbook and how to work with staff, because a lot of the capacity building that leads to the effective implementation happens in those one-on-one conversations.
Of course.
So we're not going to a level three and a four for an unintentional physical action that didn't cause harm, right? And so, and, and we are being consistent and effective in what we're doing, so that we're not, we're leaning into the situation and not, um, pushing out because the research is clear there, so.
Thank you very much.
I just have a dovetail question off of Director Hume, as you got me thinking too. Understanding, of course, that the, the bulk of the responsibility falls on instructional staff, we also have other adults that are in the schools, food service and custodians, for example, and in my opinion, I would think that in some way they're also involved differently, perhaps, but it, is this anything that you would discuss with food service and, and custodians?
That, thank you for that question, and now I'm even more motivated that Director Solvine and I have it on our operational leadership agenda next Tuesday, when we're, it's kind of our opening summit with everybody, and so it is going to be presented and discussed with everybody.
Awesome, thank you.
We won't get to the level of capacity building and implementation that Principal Sandoval likely will, but it's a good point.
But the expectation is that food service and custodians and any non-instructional staff.
Right.
Are generally aware of.
Yes.
Yeah, this is a one, or, you know, you need to, for something like this, you would, you know, reach out to someone else for assistance or something like that.
Here are their intervention options, here are the ways we do it, so that was another goal of bringing it to you in the first meeting in August, to give us more of a chance of that.
So an example of how we've evolved in that, um, uh, for, well, we now have, uh, free breakfast and lunch, but before it seemed to penalize the kids if they didn't have enough money in their account, and we moved away from that, we actually had specific discussion with leaders, uh, about that, um, to help with food service too, that's food shaming. So it is very important, especially when we lean into our core values, so thank you for that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, first, we're going to start with, uh, I'm going to move to amend the motion that we've had in front of us, uh, the, to, um, change the, the, uh, the main motion to remove the strikeout of or personal grooming in the behavioral matrix under dress code policies five oh four, five oh six, may I have a second for that? Amended motion, amendment motion.
Second.
Second by Director Alt. Any questions or comments around this amendment? And all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Nay, okay, brings us back to the main motion then, now, um, we will be voting on the now amended, um, student handbook, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Next on the agenda is to approve the new version of the 2024-25 calendar aligned to policy six zero two. Presenting the recommendation this evening will be Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Miller, Superintendent Battle, and members of the board, uh, requesting, um, formal approval of the 24-25 amended version of the school calendar as previously presented this evening.
Is there a motion to approve the new version of the 24-25 calendar?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Second by Director Merso, is there any discussion on the matter? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Now move on to approving some policies, the first policy for consideration is policy five zero seven corporal punishment. Presenting the recommendation to approve on a first reading basis changes to policy five oh seven is Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you again, busy evening, the, um, Chair Miller, uh, members of the board, Superintendent Battle, requesting an approval on a first reading basis to changes for policy five oh seven corporal punishment. As the board may recall, uh, this was a, um, a legislative item taken up and passed really early in the session this spring, um, around prone restraint specific to our school resource officer, the school resource officer role. This is a, this, this policy change, which was discussed at the June 18th Policy Review Committee meeting, um, includes the, those Minnesota School Board Association recommended changes that resulted.
All right, is there a motion to approve the changes to policy five zero seven?
So moved.
Moved by Director Connor.
Second.
Second by Director Alt, any discussion on the matter? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, would say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Up next, we are being asked to approve on a first reba, reading basis, the adoption of a new policy, policy five zero seven point five, school resource officer. Presenting once again, Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Miller, um, as you stated, this is a new policy, um, set forth by the Minnesota School Board Association, um, that specifically details the role of school resource officers, um, based on the most recent legislative session and outcomes.
Is there a motion to approve the adaption of policy five zero seven point five?
So moved.
Moved by Director Webb.
Second.
Second by Director Merso, is there any discussion on this matter? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Our next policy up for approval on a first reading basis is policy five one four, bullying prohibition, and again, Dr. Belmont.
Thank you, Chair Miller, is, is a busy Policy Review Committee meeting for me on June 18th, that's when this was last discussed and reviewed, um, that, just some minor changes to the bullying prohibition policy, um, based on the last legislative session, mostly around, um, making sure that we are reporting and proactively giving students access to our bullis, bullying policy. The changes that are recommended and, um, for adoption tonight are consistent with our current and our pending practices in 191.
All right, is there a motion to approve policy five one four?
So moved.
Moved by Director Merso.
Second.
Second by Director Hume, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Our final policy up for approval tonight on a first reading basis is policy five zero one, school weapons. One last time, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Belmont.
Thank you, Chair Miller, um, policy five oh one, school weapons, thank you to our Policy Review Committee who reviewed this, um, our language, uh, on June 18th, 2024 meeting, um, the primary change to direct the board's attention to has to do with, um, notification, uh, processes from the superintendent's office to the board in the cases of, uh, students possessing firearms.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve policy five zero one?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Second by Director Alt, is there any discussion on the matter? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. All right, um, next on our agenda, I am going to present a recommendation to approve some modification to the superintendent's contract. The entirety of it is available in public access in our board book, in just summation, this is some minor changes, um, to holidays, uh, bereavement leave, and a definition of immediate family, uh, relative to recent, uh, contracts that we entered in with our other bargaining units. So, uh, I've moved for that, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Hume, any conversation or questions about the matter? Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed would say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Next, up on our agenda, we are being asked to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the Burnsville district-wide administrators. Presenting this recommendation tonight will be Stacy Solvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services, welcome Stacy.
Good evening, Chair Miller, Dr. Battle, members of the board, bringing to you tonight, um, the collective bargaining agreement with the, uh, Burnsville district-wide administrators. Group represents fifteen directors, um, primarily at the district level, that works across different programs and different departments. On July ninth, uh, we came to a tentative agreement for, um, the two-year contract, it did have five language items, you, again, a very similar theme, modifying holiday language to include Juneteenth, aligned our sick and bereavement language to align with other units, aligned emergency closing language to align with other units, um, also went through the, the contract to include more general neutral language, and then included steps for both years. The other thing that we, uh, did, we currently have six different lanes within the contract, we broke those down to three, so we collapsed lanes one and two, three and four, five and six, lanes one and three both had a four and four increase each year. year. Lane five had a zero and four. Reason with that is, we moved folks, we didn't need to put any money on the first step because the folks that were on lane six were going to get an increase as they were collapsed into lane, lane, what did I just say? Bye, thank you. So we were able to, to kind of save there a little bit and give a significant increase for those folks that were moving into that, then had the 4% increase after that. Matching, again, 403B is, is money well spent for both sides, and then the two-year increase cost is about $393,000 for, for the folks, as with all the steps and the lane increases. So with that, it is my recommendation that the Board of Education approve the proposed revisions and re-adopt the unchanged language in the 2023-2025 master agreement with the Burnsville District-wide administrators.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation in front of us?
So moved.
Moved by Director Merso.
Second.
Second by Director Alt. Any discussion on the matter?
I just had a comment. I'm just a little surprised that they get their regular pay for doing jury duty.
That is across all of the units, and I believe that's right. But I can't quote it for you. So before I say that publicly, I will look that up. But that there is, there is a monetary reimbursement for jury duty.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The motion carries unanimously. Next, we will consider adopting the proposed terms and conditions of employment for unaffiliated employees of ISD 191. Presenting this recommendation tonight will be Stacy Solvine, Director of Administrative Services.
The terms and conditions for unaffiliated employees is the one that has the most significant changes of all the units that we'll be bringing to you this season. Part of that is with community ed, with the instructors from community ed being represented now by BEA, we rolled the remaining folks that were under community ed into unaffiliated. So we had two different policies. We're cleaning that all up. Another thing is, when we started off with unaffiliated, we had less than 20 individuals in positions that were represented in that group. We have a few more now. And what has happened over time is, the salary ranges and the placement for the units started to diverge so much that somebody would be coming in, and it's like, well, it says that the maximum is this figure. Well, that's because somebody else that's in with this group, that's, that's their market value, if you will. But it isn't for everybody. So what we have tried to do is now break this into three distinct terms and conditions that are more aligned with the folks who are actually in there. So tier one would be your full-year directors. That's it. Just the five directors, or assistant soup as well. The tier two will represent your full-year salaried employees, broken up again into different tier A, or tier 2A, tier 2B, tier 2C, along that line. Tier three are your 184-day salaried employees or hourly employees. So there are three distinct sections now that we can talk about. Because 184-day employees, well, they were looking at the terms and conditions, says, well, there's stuff in here for vacation. Well, no, that doesn't really apply to you because you're only working 184 days and you're following the school calendar, would be an example for that. So everything is aligned a little bit better. The other thing is, for tiers two and tiers three, we moved away from a minimum range up to a maximum range because on July 1st, when we do postings, we have to do a salary range, and having a matrix that actually shows the steps and shows what the minimum and what the maximum will be and how you're going to get there for the different positions, will make that a whole lot easier as we move forward in our postings versus, it could be anywhere in through this range. Okay? So all of that, and then we also did a market study back in November, so some adjustments were made underneath that, alignments with that. But I think going forward, this will be clearer for many of the employees. It'll be more specific for where they are. We're giving credit for those who actually have earned degrees, a bachelor's degree, that are coming into it as well on the table. So we're just hoping that this is more transparent and clear for the employees who fall under these terms. So, kind of, so that's really high stuff. Again, we eliminated community service terms and conditions, rolled them into here, went from salary ranges to distinct steps, market adjustments for various positions, specifically registered nurses, licensed practitioner nurses, community service associates, because they were still in the low teens as far as starting. These are the positions that may come before the school day starts, after the school day. We're also condensing that. Removed dated MOU grandfather language. We had a MOU for an individual that just retired this year, so that's all gone. So that was the last of the remnants from the DWA conversion. And we also removed some of the things as far as post-employment benefit payouts. That language is now gone. We also removed the cultural liaisons from these terms. In April, they voted to become their own bargaining group. So we, we are waiting for them to come to the table so that we can start discussing their contracts going forward. Updated the bereavement language, updated the sick leave language, included Juneteenth. Salary ranges, again, if you look at the top end, we're just about a 4% increase, a little over that from the top end. The bottom end, that was, community ed, was around 15.6. For a full-year employee now, for those folks, they'll be making just under 30. So everything else was just tightened up within, within that. Increased cost over two years, about 1.4 million, with about a 15.43% increase. So with that, it is my recommendation that the Board of Education approve the proposed revisions and re-adopt the unchanged language in the 23-25 terms and conditions of the employment for the unaffiliated employments of Independent School District 191.
Okay. Is there a motion for the recommendation in front of us?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt. Second by Director Connor. Any discussion on the matter? Yes, Director Alt, go ahead.
Just wanted to thank you Stacy. A lot of time and energy went into splitting this up, a lot of thoughtful effort, trying to make sure that people are where they need to be, things are, you know, aligned. And that original policy was a bit unmanageable, and I can imagine.
It was getting there.
Yeah.
It needed, it needed new walls.
So, I, I appreciate the segmentation and, and all your time.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I have just a brief one, more of a curiosity. All three of these documents open up with very specific job title descriptions of the, of the covered, for the most part, there are. Is that not going to get you into a bind if you find yourself needing to fill a position that's not quite described as, in the, in these documents?
If we bring on a position that is very similar to another position, we'll go along that line. If it is something so unique, I have the ability to bring it back to the board because it is policy in that sense, so we can update that. And unfortunately, in another 10 months, I'll be bringing it back to you anyway. So this will expire at the end of June of 2025. So we should be good.
All right, just curiosity. All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. All right. Then Stacy will be presenting one final recommendation under new business. We will be asked to consider adopting the proposed terms and conditions of employment for confidential employees of ISD 191.
So this is a very limited group. This would include two of my employees in the HR department, payroll, includes, well, and finance as far as our, I'm going blank on his title, but it, it's compliance and the grants and everything else along that line, and as well as Sarah. This is for folks who have access to confidential information as well as in some way may provide information towards negotiations, and the sources and the helping as far as costing and everything along that line, or other, privy to other information. With that, again, moving from a range, a minimum, maximum, to schedule with three different steps. That includes an educational component. We're adding a longevity increment at 15 years. We updated the bereavement, sick, and holiday language like we have in all of the other units. Removed some dated language, increasing the 403B contribution. So the two-year cost for these folks is just about $96,000, or 12.33%. It is therefore my recommendation that the Board of Education approve the proposed revisions and re-adopt the unchanged language in the 23-25 terms and conditions of employment for the confidential employments of Independent School District 191.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation in front of us?
So moved.
Moved by Director Merso.
Second.
Second by Director Webb. Is there any discussion on the matter? Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The motion carries unanimously. You? This concludes the regular portion of our business meeting. Tonight, next on our agenda will be a work session to review a list of board priorities, discuss the board planning document for 2024-25, and a schedule of board retreat. Before starting that work session, I move that we take a brief recess and return to the dais at, let's make it 8:05 to begin our work session. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by myself and second by Director Connor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The motion carries unanimously. Please return to the dais at 8:05. Please return to the dais at 8:05.
Question, I think more specifically, I think it's going to depend a lot too on what, where they practice and such.
Where they meet.
Well, they have, they practice. We will begin our work session this evening by opening up discussion on the proposed list of board priorities. Here to present the current draft is Stacy Sauvigne, Executive Director, Administrative Services.
I thought it'd be good to just give a little bit of a context with this as we move in. 2016, 2017 in that area is when we introduced a lot of our pathway programs at the high school, introduced some specialized certifications and licensure, licensure expertise in that area. Then I believe it was actually the following contract with the teachers where the state changed the language within statute to where districts could negotiate ULA language on requested leave of absences. Layoffs is really what that came down to. And at that time, we had a lengthy process for negotiations where we were, the board at the time was really intent on protecting these positions and that they wouldn't be lost solely on seniority because not everybody in a certain department had the same qualifications as someone who may have been more senior. They may not have had a master's in a content area. They may not have had a certain certification for automotives, whatever that may have been. So this became the compromise that was put into the contract, that every year, the board would identify the priorities for the upcoming fiscal year. We're already into this school year. So that's why when you look at the dates, we're saying 2425, 2526 will be based upon this year's staffing. So we're actually looking a year out. And part of the reason for that was to allow teachers, if they were in some of these areas, if that wasn't going to be a protected area, to get certification or to get some of the things that they may need so that, and they, you know, we'd be looking at severe budget cuts or something like that. It gave time for teachers to adjust where it didn't feel like shenanigans were occurring in the spring as far as cutting different areas. So that's why we do this so early for the upcoming year. It's also one of the reasons because after the first couple of years, once we kind of figured out, okay, what, do we have all the pathways identified? Do we have all the different unique positions identified? Do we have everything with the principles? Why you continue to see roughly the same table every year, but just dates updated. We haven't added a whole lot or done a whole lot different that this language doesn't already cover from back in 2000, well, when we started kind of landing on this back in around 2019, 2020. So really, the only thing I'm bringing to you tonight that is different is just updating the dates. All of the different types of programs, the positions, everything else that we have protected in the past are rolling forward at this point in time.
Okay. Well, this is a work session, so I'll just kind of open the table up if there's any questions or comments.
Well, you literally just answered the one question I had was what changes are there other than the dates?
Yes.
So.
I try to anticipate.
I did not have a chance to compare to last year's.
Yep.
So I appreciate you saying that.
Yep.
I did have one question. With the updated BEA contract, it stipulates that the board must approve them by a certain date. Was that changed in the last?
It's in August.
It's still August.
It remains in August. So we're doing the workshop now. Hopefully then I'll be able to bring these to you at the next meeting.
I just had a question about the specialists in elementary. I can't remember the name, the learning specialists that were added.
The advanced learning specialists?
Yes.
Digital? Which ones? So the advanced?
No, the learning specialists were added at each site. We added a .5 more, so yeah.
Those positions wouldn't necessarily need to be protected. Yeah. You would have brought them forward otherwise. Yeah.
Yeah. There's no additional certification outside of their elementary licensure. They may have a reading specialist degree, but that's also a license.
Okay.
So, you know, they would be covered under those areas.
Great, thank you.
Any other thoughts? The only thing I would question is, are we accommodating enough in the first one under the CHEF indications with the potential upcoming other discussions we might have about the development of that program?
It is a growing program. The folks that are teaching it are, yes, this would cover our growth in that area.
Comprehensive enough to cover the growth, is what I'm asking. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Any other thoughts? All right. I guess you have guidance for next meeting.
Off we go.
All right, thank you. All right, next item is to look over the, okay, look over the 2023-24 board planning document and make adjustments, recommendations for the 2425 document. So the 2324 is included as reference. We have for us the 2425 with some red line or red changes in it.
It's too small for my eyes.
No, that's fair.
Mine are.
Likewise.
Even with my extra eyes.
And again, just in general, this is a document for those listening or whatever. This is a general matrix document to sort of remind us of what needs to get done. I'm probably way oversimplifying it, but in a timely fashion and a monthly basis.
One thing that's helpful with this in the past is, especially with an election coming up this year where we'll have at least two new board members, it'll be a good part of their orientation to be able to share this document with them right away so they'll have kind of an idea of the flow for the year.
Yep. It absolutely should be a grounding position for anybody trying to understand the responsibilities and tasks of the year. So I just will open it up for a conversation about additions, changes, commentary on the existing proposed changes, et cetera.
Just a question on the notes. Are the notes just for the draft? Those would not necessarily be included in the final document.
Which notes? The red or?
The red. So like, under budget, what month am I looking at? April. It says notes from this year.
So we mixed a little bit of, maybe in the draft here, we mixed a little bit between actual changes and notation.
Just notations.
And what happened actually this year in red.
Right. But that one, but that wouldn't be in the final.
Unless you decide.
Yeah, no, no.
We just.
That was not the, just an FYI.
It was just information for you.
Got it.
Well, but then if you go back again on budget, under September, there's an actual addition there, certify local levy.
Mm-hmm.
That's not a note. I mean, just, you should just.
That's not a note.
I guess if not indicated such, it's, it's not, it is a note, I guess.
And it's spelled certified.
Yeah.
Maybe just make some, maybe choose a different font color, whatever she wants to do, but choose to make some distinction between what is actually being added and what is just there for reference.
So things in the red right now, the way we were things you actually did related to that topic this past year. So you actually certified the local levy in September and that wasn't on there before.
Well, then March, March of Board Development, there's a conference for 2026 notated in there. So again, just.
As you said, every other year.
No, no, that's fine. I'm just.
You're right, it's a hodgepodge.
I'm just saying, for reference, just maybe some distinction of what's, what's being proposed.
Well, I'm looking at some of the budget notes. It looks like they're like, maybe things that we did this year that weren't specifically called out in the planning document, and I imagine those notes are there for us to discuss, like, do we want to have a work session to review the FY25 budget in whatever month I'm looking at right now? I need to scroll up. Because we did this year, February, for example.
I think it makes sense to put it in there as a book, you know, kind of a placeholder.
Yeah, I do too.
Well, maybe, maybe it breaks up, broke some slightly larger, or just, is it acceptable to put recommendations? We've always kind of held this as a, you know, a stone thing, basically, right? It's appearing in this month, it must happen in this month.
Yep.
And it, you know, and it has, you know, there are times we've learned over the years that we need some flexibility, so.
Right.
So maybe with the work session, we put January and February so that there's an option to do the, the work session in January or February. And it could be, you know, work session January or February, work session January or February.
As someone who was chair not too long ago, I would have found that helpful. Yes. So I think it's good to have flexibility, but also reminders that don't forget we need to have a work session about the budget sometime in the early winter, January, February timeline, whether it's, doesn't that, we don't have to be as specific as say first meeting of the month in February necessarily, but having it in there is good.
Well, I would actually say for January, I wouldn't be specific, but for February, if we're having a work session about budget.
Sure, that's just an example, but yeah.
I would say the first meeting of February makes sense because it helps keep us on track.
So as a practice, I think it would be acceptable to, and you can, to work with some language around the distinction of recommended event timing and hard fast. We're not going to be moving graduation celebrations out of June, for instance, right?
Probably not.
But, yeah, again, some of the things we discussed could be recommended to happen within a period. Does that make sense? I'm actually thinking this, this to your advantage.
It's still clear.
Okay.
So recommend.
So what I'm asking, you're on the budget, so January, February.
Where is January?
So you want a reminder, that's why I blew mine up. So I heard you want either January, February, then I heard definitely in February. I just need the specific language.
If it doesn't happen in January, it happens by the first meeting in February.
And you're referring to the first?
Work session.
Work session. So you're under January work session.
Yep.
Okay. But you already have work session placeholder.
I was just going to say, when I scroll up.
That's why I'm, it's not.
Got it.
It does say work session placeholder. I hadn't scrolled it down far enough.
I've got my glasses on.
Oh, it does say that, yep. It does say that.
It says that, so it says kind of what you were suggesting, Eric, but.
You already had that, you got to tell me.
Well, we agree placeholder is interpreted that way. I'm fine with that. I don't know that. I know, again, as Scott has indicated, there have been cases where we've had, you know, know, concern about things not falling on the right month when it, there was outlying impact that drove it to a different, we got done, it just wasn't necessarily following this timeframe. And we need to prob, I'm, I'm suggesting we allow a little bit of flexibility into the document.
I agree. You have to, because things are going to come up that you can't predict. And maybe you can't do a budget workshop on that particular meeting because of some other pressing need and has to be kicked down the road two weeks.
And as chair, it's helpful to see that the, at, at least for me, when I was chair, seeing, you know, something like that would have been helpful as, oh yeah, that's right, we can call those.
Right.
Just in case we do need to do it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And then we just update all the fiscal year to be accurate. We're putting there too.
Yeah.
Twenty-five is now twenty-six.
I imagine in the case of the budget, we'll have a work session at some point where we'll map out when do we, when are we actually planning to have. So, this is more of a guiding document.
I would like to suggest on behalf of the negotiations committee that we add the negotiations committee to this document. And based on conversations, let me pull it up. That negotiations committee, closed session in February or March. So, I guess it would be of odd years. Yeah, that's right. The closed session of February or March of odd years.
A couple of months before the contracts expire.
Before the contracts expire. Exactly. And that would be the placeholder so that then, depending on the year. And I know, Dr. Battle, that you and Stacy were working on a document, perhaps that can be added to this, the planning document as a hyperlink or, you know, whatever the, the contents of that.
I know what she's referring to. Stacy, exactly.
So, it's, let me go back. There's that. There's that. And there were a couple of other hyperlinks. If you go back to the email that I sent Stacy. Oh, well, the original one was. Yeah. Yes. Yes. The original one.
I got it.
Okay.
I know what it is, Stacy.
Yep. So, that.
Okay. Anything else under negotiations?
I don't, I don't think.
Okay.
We had, let me double check.
I remember we were both surprised that it wasn't already something there.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh. For the document, that's it.
Okay. Discussion, any other additional inputs, conversation?
Are you good with the additions? Like, we, you asked for the REDACT.
Yeah. I was going to say, I see at the bottom, there's something about REDACT updates.
So, we'll add that.
Is that updates being brought to the board on a?
Right. You asked that for your?
Yep.
Was it the board goals? Yeah, I think so.
Oh, right. Yep.
So, we'll map it out, updates. And then the other one was, oh, the strategic dashboard. We didn't have those in last year because we did, we had identified those report months after the fact. So, we put that in there. That's also in red. And then this year is the year for the consortium of school board associations. So, every other year, you said one year you go to MSB. What is the conference?
MSBA is every year.
No. Well, this one.
And where is it?
It's somewhere back east. Yeah.
Oh, this year, COS SBAs in Atlanta.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep. So, there you, because it was two years ago we went. Yeah, you said every, the board said every other year.
And one thing that I just remembered too, really in the weeds, with the reorganization of the board in January, we want to make sure that the, that board email address is assigned to the new chair if there is a new chair.
Oh, yeah.
That's kind of a, I mean, that's just something that can easily fall through the cracks.
I would maybe suggest in the document, there was, there's maybe something to the fact of transitional events, you know, handled or something like that. And then somewhere else reference, because you don't want to get into a little detail. Let's get done.
Because you have elected board members start first Monday, the oath of office, and then we could just add in other transitional events.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Got that. One.
Anything else? Going once, twice? All right. So, the final item tonight is to schedule a board retreat. And I can add up a per, plus of what we're scheduling a board, board retreat for.
Well, previously, we had one in the summer. And we have one in August. So, right. And August is, okay, it's here.
Guess what?
That's why.
So, we're just, we're suggesting that we could have one and we, then we could talk about what the topic would be. Is that, or is there one that we're actually?
So, it was two. Usually you had a summer one in August and you would set topics. And then at the board meeting, you would actually set the date, I mean, approve the date. So, that's what that item's about. So, do you want a September one? And then what are just some of the possible topics? Yeah, just discussion.
Or even work that backwards. Do we need one?
Right.
Our board goals that we approved this evening, we talk about a facilitated retreat to learn more about CPSS. Is that?
That would fulfill the-
I don't know if that's the right time, but it is in our board goals that we just approved.
Okay. We could do that. We would, I assume that would be something facilitated internally, right?
Yeah. Yes.
So, we're not looking at an external expense for that.
No. Remember, we sent four people. They are national trainers now, including ISAs.
Would we, if we scheduled something in September, would we be giving them enough bench notice to put together curriculum for whatever level of training we're at by this point or?
It could be October. I think they need more time. Yeah.
Because we just completed some updated CPSS for our leadership academy. So, I think they would be ready.
Okay.
And timing in general at the start of the school year would be fine for them.
Right.
Is, in general, is, is a retreat of this nature more, is it easier for you guys, like an evening type of thing? We've been doing those fairly lately. Or a Saturday morning or something like that?
I'd rather do it on a weekday evening.
Me too.
So, Jamie can put together maybe a little pick.
Jamie.
Oh, wow. Blast from the past.
Maybe just getting back in the saddle.
Maybe Jamie could do it. I don't know.
I'm sure she's working right now.
I would never want to.
Did you call her? Call our superintendent, Battle, and ask her.
Maybe Sarah could put together some sort of poll with a few recommended timeframes and we'll pick one that works best. All right. That covers that. Then having, the time is now eight twenty-eight and having no further agenda items, I now call this adjourn the meeting of the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I missed you guys. Welcome back.